Board of County Commissioners is now basing this session. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Amy Hamm for planning and zoning report.
Okay. The planning and zoning revisited a rezoning and land use application. It was not recommended unanimously. The consideration of a request for a land use change from residential to commercial to a PUD mixed-use commercial, rezoning from R2 single-family mobile home and C2 commercial business, a 57.08 acre parcel lying in Section 36 Township 8 South, Range 7 West, 105 Island Drive, East Point Franklin County, Florida. The PUD will consist of 180 RV slips, and I think that went down to 150, and outdoor seating, 85 dwellings, which they showed 75, and a restaurant bar lounge with liquor sales and including indoor and outdoor seating capacity of 200. Request submitted by Craig Dermody, authorized agent for Max Cross. We did receive an email asking us to table it in order for them to revise it and come back at a later date, but that would be at the pleasure of the board.
Okay. Go ahead.
We all understand the process, and I wasn't in the meeting, so I'm sort of paraphrasing what happened. So, there was a meeting by P&amp;Z. The applicants were there and made a presentation. P&amp;Z talked to the applicants about, you know, their concerns and suggested maybe you ought to withdraw it at this time. It's not ready for consideration. The applicants wanted a hearing. They wanted a vote. P&amp;Z gave them a vote. It was a recommendation denial. And now after that vote, a letter comes to you all saying, "Oh, we would like to table it." Well, that's a little late.
What the horse without the double.
Yeah, yeah. So, I just want to let the process know we're in this, you know, not confused area, but the applicants are asked after the vote was taken, you know, a week later, now they were, two weeks later, now they say, "Oh, we want to table it." But P&amp;Z's acting. You have this dilemma that you've got an action by P&amp;Z you need to deal with first.
Okay. Let me ask one question real quick, and the attorney may want to have some input on this. And if you read the top of this thing that we got here today in front of us, Franklin County Planning and Zoning Recommendation Agenda Tuesday, January 16, 2018. Please note, Planning and Zoning Commission makes recommendations to the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners regarding your application. All applicants are notified that if your application is denied, it may now be resubmitted for one year. And then it goes on about any person wishing to appeal or responsible for verbatim transcript. Mr. Schiller, you were at this meeting?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I was there for other reasons, but I was present at the meeting. I found out about the meeting, the afternoon of the P&amp;Z meeting, I found out that this item was on the agenda. I guess it was around 3:30 or so. I had a phone conversation with Ms. Amy Hamm. And so, I did participate somewhat in that hearing and trying to make sure that everyone had their due process opportunities to speak and be heard and have an opportunity to ask questions and cross-examine staff. I believe I asked, I reminded the applicant of that several times during the hearing. In fact, I had suggested that they table, that they request to table the application, not withdraw. I think Mr. Pierce had mentioned withdrawing. That my recommendation actually was, well, I actually questioned the applicant because they had made a statement which led me to think that they wanted to table their request and not move forward at that time. So, I asked a clarifying question, and they came back and said, "No, they did not want to table. They wanted to move forward, and they did want a decision not from planning and zoning at that time."
And I hadn't served on the Planning and Zoning Board for six years before I was elected as Commissioner to this office. I've been there a lot of times, and people would withdraw when they saw opposition or they saw that their plan was not going where they wanted it to go. But as our policy reads it, if you make the P&amp;Z Board go forward with a vote, and it could come back with a recommendation or recommendation of denial, that you, once you cross that threshold, then it comes to this Board to make a further decision. But you're not allowed to table that thing once this goes through the P&amp;Z and goes through the procedure. That's the way I've always seen it done, and that's the procedure that I think we have in place. So, my question is, the email that we got for, requested for tabling is not appropriate. If you do that, everything that goes before that P&amp;Z Board that is recommended denial, are going to say, "Come to this Board and ask for a table. I want to go back to P&amp;Z." And as the policy reads, you're not allowed to do that for at least one year. So, I want to make that clear to the Board before we look at this issue, make clear that the entity that submitted the application was aware that if they asked the P&amp;Z Board for a vote, and they get a vote of that P&amp;Z Board, and that vote is a denial, then they're not allowed, if this Board denies it, they're not allowed to come back for a year. So, it is a pleasure of the Board on this. Ms. Amy, did you have anything else you wanted to add to this?
No, sir.
Yes, we got questions everywhere. Go ahead, Ms. Lockley.
What was the reason for denial?
There was a lot of opposition. There was some areas of concern for egress and ingress for the RV. So, you know, they couldn't, there was prohibited access off of South Bay Shore Drive on the plan for the RVs. There was a questionable area where a new cut would be made just shot of Island Drive and South Bay Shore, the connector road. There was a lot of concern about traffic and historical reasons. So, there was a lot of opposition, and the plan, I think if they would have had time to get some workshops available and let the public, you know, be able to wrap their rain around it, you know, I think that they could have had a better plan maybe, but that's not my determination. I'm neutral here. But, you know, there was a lot of opposition, a lot of concerns from the citizens and...
Did the applicants make any representation that there was adequate sewer and water available?
Yes. They said that they, the East Point Water and Sewer had capacity. They were in charge of all the infrastructure attached to the sewer and water. They would have to put all of that in place themselves.
But they had no letter from East Point Water and Sewer stating that they had the taps or their ability to get those taps. From what I was told, I didn't go to the meeting, but...
I think that they had the numbers.
There was kind of an issue there. Commissioner Flanders?
Yeah, I got it to say. You know, as, like you, I served on Planning and Zoning too, and it's like I said, once you let that horse out of that gate, you can't stop it. And we have a very gifted Planning and Zoning Commission, and it is our, it is our desire to follow suit when they so vote on something unless we really have a heartburn with it. You know, we go with Planning and Zoning. And Mr. Chairman, if nobody else has got anything else to say, I'm going to make a motion that we uphold the decision of the Planning and Zoning and deny this.
Mr. Jones, this is in your district. Would you?
Yes, sir, I would. But before I make, say anything else, I would like to second her motion. I would like to remind this Board that this section of road on South Bay Shore, we've actually discussed several times and discussed possibly any traffic studies on that road because it is a racetrack when they come around that corner toward that double Y for whatever reason. The Sheriff's Department's been there several times. I'm sure they haven't caught every speeder on that road. Matter of fact, there was a time in the past, without going too deep into it, where the speed was changed on the road. There was a couple of tickets given, and the speed was bumped back up. So, it also on that road, there is on both ends of South Bay Shore, a sign saying, "No through trucks." So, it's already been designated that way by the, you know, by the state saying that's what needs to happen. I just want to remind this Board that that is an area of concern for us as we're, it's part of our job to provide for the safety and well-being of our residents. So, I just want to remind you guys of that.
Ms. Lockley, you have something else you want to say?
Yeah, I want to know that they meet the zoning.
Well, the current plan doesn't, and they were asking to have a planned unit development. A planned unit development is a development where they do a land use change and a rezoning change to do it a special way in order that there's not like a lot of cuts and wiggles and turns and stuff, and it makes it really confusing on our zoning map. So, what they do is they do an overlay of a planned unit development where there's a section of residential, a section of business, and a section of RV. You know, we've done like St. James Bay, summer camp, and, you know, different PUDs. And then this one is just a different type of PUD where there's three different types of zoning within one parcel, large parcel of land. So, they get their vision of commercial RV and residential all in one package, and the zoning cuts on the maps and, you know, it wouldn't be hard to define.
One thing I'd like to add, county staff, when Mr. Jones was talking about on South Bay Shore that there's two signs there that says, "No trucks," whether or not on 98. So, they make the turn to go towards the island on South Bay Shore off of Highway 98, and then you see the sign that there's no trucks allowed. That actually needs to be on Highway 98 so they can see before they turn because big trucks are having to find a place on that road to turn around. Once they see the sign, it's too late. So, that was one of the phone calls that I got on this issue was that that sign needs to be put on 98 so they don't turn on about South Bay Shore, and then they don't have a place to turn around, so then they have to continue on. So, I'd like county staff to look at that, see if we can't move that sign over to 98 and probably on the other end, move it over to Island Drive before the big trucks go on South Bay Shore because that is a real narrow road. Speed limits are down, and it's highly congested. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones, to uphold P&amp;Z's recommendation of denial. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries to deny that project. Next on the, anything else, Ms. Amy?
No, sir.
Thank you for presenting that for us today. Next on the agenda will be Madam Clerk.
I don't have a report.
As the record reflects, Madam Clerk has no report.
And I just have something to say today. Thank you for being here, Ms. Marshall. You're looking good. Well, it's good to see you. I like to see you at the meeting. And I have to say, I don't know if all the Board members understand, you know, a clerk's duty, they don't have to come to the commission meeting, but you know what? Our clerk does. A lot of the Smaro County Commission clerks, I'm going to talk while they're trying to get out.
Oh, she did?
They do, but, you know, the larger counties, they don't. But anyway, I'm glad to see our clerk attends our meetings because you know what we've approved and what we hadn't approved as far as money-wise, so there's no questions about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sanders, I'd like to add something to that. Not every county in the state of Florida has the resident president of the Clerks Association as a clerk either, so...
I want to mention that all, that she, yeah, we're proud of her being president of the Clerks Association.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Alan Pierce, Restore Coordinator Report.
Good morning. I have several items that are more for information. According to the Board, that the county finally did receive a letter from the Governor's Office verifying the size of the waiver for Hurricane Hermine. We received a partial waiver. We are responsible for 6.25% of the costs associated with any Hermine PWs. The normal local match is 12.5%. So, we received a 50% reduction in our obligations. That still puts us straight on the Ballpoint Trust Fund. If the current expected costs for reconstructing the Alligator Point Road are $3.4 million or $3.5 million unrealized, the amount of money coming out of the trust fund will be over $200,000, and that is what this waiver factored in. This trust fund currently has $500,000 in it, so it will be cut almost in half with no foreseeable way of getting ever, getting money back into it. Now, a copy of the Governor's letter is attached. The next time a storm hits, there may not be enough money in the trust fund to cover the county's local match repairs on Alligator Point, especially if the county does not receive another waiver. And I will tell you, there's no promise or guarantee we will receive another waiver. If there's not enough money, the county would have to take funds out of general revenue. So, I just want to get on the record that, you know, even though we got a waiver, we didn't get a full waiver, we got a half waiver. So, instead of all Ballpoint Trust Fund going away, half is going to go away, which puts us in a precarious situation the next time a storm comes through.
And this is what, this is what our cushion has been for so many years on the matches, the waivers, and whatever else, the Ballpoint Trust Fund. And this is something that we have put a warning out for everybody to know that, because when we start taking out general revenue, then you really going to start having a problem.
Especially if it's not budgeted for.
That's right. That's right.
Alan, do you need any action from the Board to accept the waiver?
No, no. Yeah, it's been in the process. It's just, the waiver will become effective when we start putting our PWs in, but I just want the Board to know that, you know, we wouldn't get a full waiver, we only got a half a waiver, so...
Yeah.
Okay. Item number two, inform the Board that it received a letter from Mr. Cal Nickerbocker. Well, let me go back to the trust fund. So, you know, I am concerned about the future of Alligator Point and the road out there and its maintenance, and probably in February, I'll bring up, I won't do it today because I thought we were going to have a longer meeting. We'll talk about, you know, what other protective action that we ought to be looking at on Alligator Point. I'm still looking at, we're still going through the environmental assessment process for the reconstruction of Alligator Point Road. It's not finished yet. Hope we'll be done in February, and we'll get an assessment then from FEMA about what they're going to recommend we do, and so I'll be coming back up. But I am concerned about the future of that road and how the county will pay for it. It's not, that problem is not going away.
We really need to, and as Commissioner of that district, we really need to focus on it. And everything, and do a long-range plan.
Yes.
Because if you don't, you know, everything would have been fine had the people voted for the beach re-nourishment. Not, we stand by that, we stand by that vote if they not vote. But is it going to be fine? No, because Mother Nature's going to keep on, it's just a very bad area. And it, Mother Nature, Nature's going to keep on taking it away.
Right. But even if we get this road built the way we're looking at, there's another 1,000 feet of road or so that's going to be exposed and vulnerable to erosion for the next storm. We're not solving the problem by spending 3.5 million dollars out there. They say it that way, but I am. Okay. Item number two, inform the Board that it received a letter from Mr. Cal Nickerbocker in response to the letter the Board sent to the Agricultural Secretary, Adam Putnam. A copy of the letter is attached, but the summary is this, "If legislation passes this session, then the City of Apalachicola will be issuing oyster licenses." DAX is not backing up. FTC is not backing up. The legislation hasn't been retracted, so at this point, if the legislature act on this, on what's proposed, the City of Apalachicola will be the licensee of oyster licenses in Apalachicola Bay.
So, you, they telling us they going to use DAX anyway, right? Is that what you're saying?
The, DAX is supporting the City of Apalachicola being the licensee, yes.
Okay, but they telling us they not going to do nothing in the future.
That's correct.
Okay, I think we need to put them in coke then because they, they not going to do nothing for the bay, but they going to support the City of Apalachicola for license and stuff, but they not going to do nothing to help. They want us to take it.
That's correct. So, this is what, one paragraph of the letter, this is from Cal Nickerbocker. "Transferring the issuance of licenses to the city would provide recurring revenue generated from the sale of licenses that could be utilized to jumpstart local Apalachicola Bay projects such as shell recycling from local restaurants, shellfish processing plants, reef restoration efforts, educational programs for shellfish harvesting, or self-enforcement issues." Ladies and gentlemen, the amount of money coming from the issuance of licenses is not going to be enough to do any of those things.
What'd they say, 88,000? 88,000?
Maybe, yeah, that's what it was last year.
It won't plant 10 buckets full of shells.
No.
They want the money for something else. But see what I'm talking about here? They just jumping all over the county, disrespecting us, but they want us to take the BP money we going to get and put in the bay and with this.
That's correct.
They going to take and tell us, we going to let the city do it, this and the city do that. Nobody else in the state of Florida, the cities don't take or be over the county. They going to tell us, they going to let them do it. We ain't going to put nothing in there, and y'all going to take y'all money and do that.
That's a risk. That's, Commissioner, exactly right. That's a risk.
Well, I think we're on for to let them do that. Have a little fight on there.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment? Trying to be nice about it. If Department of Agriculture Consumer Services is saying, and you see, I want to specifically say, is saying that they believe and they support the City of Apalachicola doing it, no reflection on the City of Apalachicola, but I have to say this, they're saying it with somebody backing them up bigger than Adam Putnam. Can I say that? That's what they're saying. Somebody's backing that switch from the Department of Ag to the City of Apalachicola that's bigger than Commissioner Adam Putnam, okay? And that is the reason why. And, I mean, we have legislative delegations, and we have brought this issue to the legislative delegation, and yet they have not did anything.
That's correct.
So, I just want this point to be brought out. That's what I'm saying. Something bigger than Adam Putnam and the Department of Ag.
The thing of it is, they ain't got enough money to use, but the bay, what are they going to do with the money?
It says they're going to start a shell recycling program. In other words, they're going to go around to the local restaurants and other places and bring the shells, get the shells that has been shut down, it have raw barn, and reef restoration efforts, educational programs for safe shellfish harvesting, and our self-enforcement efforts, which means that they'll talk to the oystermen and try to get them to leave the babies out there to grow up to be big oysters, blah, blah, blah. But what it really comes down to, folks, is the Department of Agriculture, they used to run the barge, the barge and tug that planted shells in Apalachicola Bay, usually two trips a day. They no longer do that. My point being is, if we bring the bay back and if everything is going good and the evolution continues, at some point, the bay is going to be without shells again. Where are they going to get money to re-shell Apalachicola Bay? It's not going to happen, folks. When the BP money's gone and all the grants are gone, the fisheries disaster monies is gone, there'll be no monies to re-shell Apalachicola Bay, and it will not survive if you don't re-shell it so that it's fat, the microorganism that floats through the water and attaches to a shell and grows from there to become an oyster. It's a major issue when your state agency shuts down the shelling program that's been going on here for 50 to 75 years. You have to read the writing on the wall. Now, they're getting rid of the, even issuing oyster license, so they're totally getting out of it. I tend to a little bit disagree with Commissioner Sanders because Adam Putnam is the Commissioner of Agriculture, which is overall of what we're talking about. And all we've seen is, to the detriment of the oyster industry in Apalachicola Bay, is all the programs that supported that, the continuance of that, and the oysters are important to this ecosystem because of the water quality factor. If you lose the oysters in this bay, your water quality's going to go down, you're going to lose your shrimp, your crabs, your fish, you're going to lose it all. So, I just want to put the public on notice that it's not Franklin County or the Board of Commissioners that's causing this problem. It's your state agency, which is supposed to be in support of water quality. It's supposed to be in support of your ecosystem. It's not happening, folks. It's not happening.
Rick, Chair, it ain't nothing get planted to the west, did it?
No.
When they was planting down, whatever they was planting, it none got planted down the side of the river, did it?
Partly because without, without a change of fresh water, there's no point putting shells down. They'd say that because you need, there's no fresh water down there. It's too salty for oysters to grow down there right now.
No, it not.
It's not. Well, that's what, that's what the story.
That's their story.
That's their opinion.
And I agree with Commissioner Lockley. If you don't put shells down there, it won't ever come back. It has no ability to come back. Even if you got water, if there's no shell down there, it's not coming back. So, a lot of these things are being done at the state level. This Board is not in control of the bay or the state submerged land use. We're not, we're not in control of that. So, it goes back to the state agencies that are in control of it, and they're no longer supporting the industry. And I think you're going to see a total collapse.
They just wash their hands.
Very possibly a total collapse of the whole estuary that we all supported. You don't have shopping malls here, you don't have 10-story condominiums here, you don't have theme parks here. It's all about the environment. That's what the people that live here and the people that's moved in here, they all want that. They like the clean and the serene environment, but without these oysters, folks, it's going to be hard to maintain that. Very hard.
And you know something, Mr. Chairman, not trying to cut Mr. No off. The public is real quick to jump on bandwagon, but unless we inform the public of what the truth is, and now it's time to tell a little truth about it. It has not been this board, it has not been this board bringing things down like that. This board has supported the serenity of, the serenity, and that's odd that I use that word, the serenity, the environment that we have in this county, because every one of us has a vested interest in it, not only to preserve it, but to protect it. And that's what we have done. For 20 years, I've sat up here, for 16 years, for 12, 15 years, we all have, look at the combined years that we have sat up here saying, "No" to certain developments. What did we just do? And one of the causes is, we want to keep it as we found it, you know? Don't leave no handprint, don't leave no footprint, leave it as you found it. And that's what we tell everybody. Come in here and love our county, but leave it like you found it. And so many people are just waiting to come in the door. But with this, it's a shame when your state government cannot take care of its own resources and forcing the burden to the local government. It's a shame. And we see that resource going down the drain, and we can't do nothing about it. And do we have the money? No. If the state doesn't have the money to protect it, how you think Franklin County is? But at some point in time, there's going to be somebody that's going to listen to us and understand us, but you know what's going to be the sad fact about it? It's going to be too little, too late because the bay, as we all have known it for many, many years, is gone. And you know what? I am very supportive, as you, Commissioner Pierce, stated a month or two back along with me, to see those oyster shells go in that bay and let's replenish the oyster shells. That's what we have to do. We have to put what comes out of that bay back in that bay. And that's what it is. We don't need, and this board has been objected to it for many years, we don't need all these other products going in there that we have had concerns about in the past and written letters to the state agencies and federal agencies about it. You know what I mean? But we, we have done what we can to protect it, but, you know, now we're being told, this, the state don't want this responsibility. We want it to fall on the county, and just at the time that the BP funds and the restored funds are supposed to come down. You know, but I'm going to tell you something, you don't look the gift horse in the mouth, but you don't spend your money before you get it too. I mean, that's just the way it is. And I'm just, I'm sad at the fact that the state has let this happen, helped, not did it all themselves, but helped let this happen. And I'm talking about the state, whoever you want.
Ms. Lockley, you have something else?
Yes, indeed. You see, the truth got to be told. And them folks sucking the job, and they going around to the city, the city bro, they taking anything. They grabbing that, they helping make their budget or whatever. But that's, but the state is wrong. State bypassing us. You said, "Wasn't no salt, too much salt." It's not, look, it's not too much salt down there. Back then, '85 was the same salt going that way as it is now. They don't want to close that bay because they got to pay some money out if they close it. That's the problem.
Yes, sir, I agree. They're not...
They don't want to close it. They going to have to help take care of the oyster. The state don't want that responsibility. But that same, when they closed it in '85, way the salt was.
Right, right. I know you're right.
They have announced a year, they have announced a year come behind it, about 10 or 12 of them. I was out there, I know. They doing the same thing, and then you got to put it on the oyster. Two of them go, they going out there, if you take all the children out the world, what you going to have 20 years from now? You going to have none. They catching all the little one now. They go out there and grow a few. They go out there and grow a few, and then next year, year and a half, they go out there and catch them before they get three inches. And they doing the same thing over and over, and they not doing nothing about that.
That's true. That's another problem.
They supposed to be regulating, and they supposed to have the people out there with them badges to protect it.
All right, so the state afforded wants the City of Apalachicola for self-enforcement. That's not going to happen.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. You got to enforce and regulate. They regulate, they tell you what three inches is, but they ain't got nobody out there regulating the three inch. It's just a, they clowning. Them folks are clowning, that's all they doing, and the way it, it's not going to work. It's not going to work. It's just going, I give it two more years, it'll kill itself the way it's going if they don't, and then the people in Tallahassee, they don't want to do, they don't want to listen to us.
You're right, Commissioner Lockley. They're not going to close the bay, so the seafood industry will start itself off, unfortunately.
Okay, now what they going to do? They know the county don't have the money. Well, the city can't pay like, so they know they ain't getting the money. So...